Books were arrived and inventoried and they're, you know, to be ready to be distributed to students. You know, there's a few older punch list items at various buildings that are still out there, but the 2020 and 2022 bond funds from the 2019 election are pretty much exhausted now. We did a few more projects than were anticipated as part of the, all the transfers this board has made to the Capital Projects Fund. You know, more than $6 million has been transferred to there over several years, and that kept us doing some things, you know, when it made sense to do some things, you know, with the roofs being messed with already, we might as well replace that whole roof. All of those things weren't necessarily known back in 2019, so you always have some things that come along and come up or change orders that make sense to do when you're doing other work that isn't necessarily anticipated in your plan five years ago or six years ago. So cleaning is going on all schools. Our new contractor seems to be doing well. Sean and I met with them today, went through some, you know, some details about the next few weeks because they, you know, they understand school's about to start and staff starts stumbling around looking, trying to get in their rooms and whatnot way ahead of their calendar of what they normally would do. But summer school's going to end this week. That'll allow them to refresh those classrooms because those classrooms were actually done right at the start of the summer, and then we used them all summer. You know, almost all of Harmon and then half of Jefferson basically were, had kids in them and staff. I mean, throughout the summer, we've got some new hires in the audience tonight. We'll make recognition of them later, but you know, the Human Resource Office is on the trail constantly, and we have many staff who participate. They volunteer to participate on interview committees and teams. And then, you know, the work that has to happen to prepare, to put people in place, and we have a pretty rigorous process that takes time, and we usually yield some good results so that, you know, for our HR office, and Tracy isn't here, but for her staff and for herself, you know, the hard work that that requires to do and the reference calls and the, you know, the chase around the people who, some of whom aren't working in July, and we find them, you know, there's ways to find people. If you have a cellphone, we're going to find you, right? So new faces are going to be in place this start of the year here. School choice ends this Friday, so anybody that's out there online still waiting to, you know, come in and fill out paperwork. Even though residents can go right to the first day of school or even after the first day of school, we want you, you know, here now because sometimes staffing changes might have to occur if lots of people show up at the last minute and we don't, nobody likes that. All three of our levels will be hosting new family welcome nights, similar to what we did last year with, you know, updates and improvements based on what we did last year. We always take our data and our feedback and make tweaks and changes to make it better the next time around. All staff are back on Tuesday the 19th of August, and students are back on the 25th of Monday. So it's a great time to be a Husky. Now, one thing that's not so good, right? No state budget. Governor and legislators need to get their act together and get together and figure it out because local school funding is dependent 85% and 90% on its state. So we're, you know, running in the blind dark here with no information, you know, and there's a law that says you're going to have it done by June 1. The problem is when they don't follow the law, there's no penalty to it. You don't have a budget July 1, there's penalties for you and for me. So yeah, that's just another thing on the side. A little disappointed about, anybody else?
I think it's worth mentioning that we think about schools as being closed, oh, sorry.
We think about summer break and schools being closed, but we have had teachers and staff in the district all summer long doing trainings, preparing to teach new things and to implement new things, and so just want to recognize all of the many staff members who have been here, working, getting ready to have another great year. It's never as quiet as you would think with all the good work going on, so we appreciate all that.
All right, any other comments? No, anything else from the board? All right, rock on, 2025.
Item A, draft superintendent's 25, 26 goals discussion.
As is true each year in August, I provide the board a sort of a summary list of some big ticket items that are going to be worked on this year with our team. Some of those are individual, some of those are departmental, some of them are grade level. This year, I just, I'll highlight a few of the things because, you know, oftentimes board has an action item in front of them that's a curricular purchase that might be $150,000 or $200,000, and that, you know, the work that went on to investigate that, to arrive at that, and then we implement it in like year two, and several of the things that were implemented last year reoccur on here because then we're going to evaluate them based on what happened with them and the implementation process. So you've got, you know, K-5 math that was a two-year phase-in process, we're evaluating that. Middle school math and English language arts was new last year, we'll be evaluating that. Some intervention curriculum materials in those areas. We did summer school differently the last two years in elementary and then this year at middle school as well, so we're evaluating how that outcome came through. You know, the new technology, even though you had a bunch of that in hands over a couple of years, we're still working through the what's new, what's available, what can you, how it can be used differently, and tech tips at staff meetings, for example, you know, people come up with ideas and use them for themselves, but then, okay, share that with your colleagues, right? So that's going to be an ongoing thing, too. And as the board knows, we're adding two more state-funded preschool classes, classrooms this year, we were able to because of facility use and new expanded facilities, we're able to do some shifting of some programming, you know, and it's out there. Artificial intelligence isn't going to disappear, and so we have to, you know, we have to work that through, and a team worked on that all last year, multiple different, you know, representative team that had teachers and administrators on it, working with ISD experts. And we're one of only two districts, I think, in the county that was doing anything specific like that on AI explicitly. So those are, you know, some of the teaching and learning points. We've always been an advocate for kids to get experiences in volunteer service, and they learn leadership skills doing those types of activities. The high school group has gotten quite robust in numbers. Huskies with heart is what you know it as. The teacher leader that's handling that and has a couple colleagues assisting her with that, because when you get, you know, over 100 kids participating in various things, you can sort of start dividing it up into committees and, you know, and that gives more kids opportunities for leadership, you know, opportunity to learn leadership. In an area that's, you know, we can now do more with because of the updates that this board approved and we just finished working on is auditorium. We've got a couple of our teaching staff who have, who went through and grew up in the community theater productions, and they're now running our community theater productions, and they have big plans. And what that leads to is opportunities for kids to learn leadership, experiences and do service and volunteer types of things in light of that structure, right? Because there are very good jobs in the backstage of these kind of productions, stage crew types of jobs, sound and lighting and well-paying. We have had some kids work with our facility and move through that, and some of the things we chose to install are sort of industry-related, so I'm working as a, you know, a student co-op in the auditorium at Lakeview, and those skills I learned transferred directly into the Gem Theater or the Fox Theater or Comerica Park. So those are good things, and it's an area I think that will be of interest to focus on as we go into this year. You know, I'm assuming we're going to want to communicate pretty heavily with our community about the idea of a new bond in November of 2025, so that will be a list of places I'll be visiting, I guess, as, you know, four times around on this type of thing for me. So we know the system and how to do it, and we have local leaders in the community who are supportive of this idea, and they're going to, you know, provide me the opportunities to do that, things like going to the city council and just making a statement for their public communication about it. Maybe, your last time I was on the mayor's TV show, whatever that's called, Mayor's Corner or something on cable, we had a lovely conversation, and I know him well, so we'll, you know, maybe do it again, just everywhere we can get the word out, make sure the community is well-informed of why, what, and the, you know, the fact that it's not, it wouldn't be a tax increase. So that should work out well. And we're going to be utilizing all the digital media that we had created last year more robustly throughout the year to market and promote the district and using social media and other things. Those informational clips, pretty well done, and they are able to help inform the public, number one, about us, both our parents and our non-parents, because when you use social media, you know, even the 70 and 80-year-olds are tapping into Facebook now, so that's good. Learning environment, this is, you know, the facilities and the culture and climate, so those are going to be, you know, some of the long-term replacement issues that we're obviously going to do, we're going to finish the current bond stuff, but we are working on climate and culture throughout the district, because some of that's retention. We were talking earlier a little bit about retention of staff, and some of the things that go along with the learning environment are part of that, right? We always hear if the air conditioning isn't working, right? And it's 85 degrees and the air is not working, we hear about it. So those are all parts of this, but the idea that the learning environment is all of those things, the facilities and the climate and culture. In financial stability, you know, we've got you a balanced budget, we think, all the state budget not being solved at all, but we'll have the parapro unit contract expiring this year, so that will be work that'll happen with respect to this. You really want to get into the, a little more of a paperless environment for our backwork, our backwork papers. A lot of digital things happen now. We use Google Forms and Google Sheets to do some of the things we do internally, and, you know, a lot of things are online, parent enrollment stuff is digital, and we're working on, you know, OneSource payment systems that is digital, so people can go to one place, not have to go to five different places like Meal Magic and GoFan and all the different places you would pay for things, right? So we're trying to do the one-stop shop for that, which is not an easy thing to do because there's not lots of companies out there trying to serve schools in that regard, but Eric's found some and we're exploring that. And 2025 bond, I mean, it's going to be one of those things that can help the district stay financially viable because big-ticket things that need to be done get funded through that source of revenue, and we'll be, you know, engaged in that process, and if it passes, obviously, there's, you know, six more years' worth of things in the future with the way that we scheduled the projects, broadly speaking. So that's my highlight reel of the 60 or 70 things you have in front of you. Any questions at all?
Yeah, you had mentioned air conditioning. Well, this past year, heat has been a contention. Where are we at with the heat for this next year?
Well, the boilers in the system that is, are good because those are new. All of the classroom units, the fanning, you know, the fans and the, we call them a univent, those are all 25 years old. So that's what's in the biggest, the biggest expense in this potential bond is the classroom units themselves. So you can have heat come into the pipe, making it all the way to the classroom door and not have a fan to blow that or to the coils and other things to move it into the room, you know, so those are really critical things, and that's the bulk of it. Probably roofs and heating and cooling is probably the bulk of, you know, probably 40% of the funding that's related to this potential bond on November 25, so.
Okay.
But we have our contractor who's routinely, you know, preventive maintenance, so we've gotten more life out of him probably than we would have had we not done that for 20-some years, and the same texts have generally been in place. I mean, most of our teaching staff know who the William E. Walter mechanical guys are, and their cell phones probably, you know, they have their cell phones for many of them because, you know, when you do have an emergency and, you know, if you're going to close the preschool because there's no air conditioning, you're going to figure something out, right? We don't want some kids home if we don't have to, so, or if there's no heat, you know, we can move you for temporarily, but we got to get it fixed in a day, or it might be a few days because of parts, but.
Okay, any other comments, questions? No? All right, well, thank you.
You'll get it back in front of you in September.
All right. Moving on to item F, appointment of MASP delegate.
Every year, Michigan Association of School Boards has a delegate assembly and fall conference, and this year is October 23rd in Grad Traverse Street or in Acme outside of Traverse City. Lakeview's allowed three voting delegates and three alternates for anybody that's going to attend. At this time, the president can identify anybody who may be attending.
Traverse City is a lot further than Lansing.
Do we have any volunteers?
Yeah, on a Thursday in the middle of the week.
I've made that run many, many times since when my dad was living in assisted living in Traverse. It's three and a half hours from my house, which means it's more than four from here.
Yeah, the last, the last couple of years it's been in Lansing because I've gone to it the last couple of years.
And they've had it in Detroit before that, which is convenient, but.
All right, so I guess we won't have our representative this year.
Let them know.
All right, moving on to general, item A, board policy 2002 language updates, graduation requirements, FAFSA.
At this time, administration requests the board approve policy update to section 2002, learning and achievement graduation requirements as provided by Miller Johnson, our policy consultant. The reading for this consideration, these policy and regulation updates was completed at the July 8th regular meeting.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education adopt the update to section 2002, learning and achievement graduation requirements as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item B, first reading board policy administrative regulations update.
This is the first reading of policy administration and regular updates recommended by Miller Johnson more recently. The board at ADHOC Subcommittee reviewed these proposed updates and changes to language with administration in detail at their meeting of July 8th, 2025, and suggested bringing them forward to the full board for consideration. These updates include changes in policy 2006, student behavior, 5,000 fiscal requirements for federal grants, 6,000 safety and security, and 8,000 general ADA requirements. There's no action at this time, but any comments or suggestions from the boards are taken into account before the second reading, which would be in September.
Any questions or comments from the board? None? All right. Item C, bond ballot language and call for election on November 5, 2025.
Throughout the 2425 school year, administration engaged experts and consultants in research and review of Lakeview's capital infrastructure needs. Building equipment, technology, infrastructure, sites, classrooms, roofing, and future program needs were all considered during this process. Design and construction team members utilized surveys, small group discussion, and historical data when seeking input from district staff, union leaders, students, parents, and administrators to develop detailed lists of needs for updating the district's buildings, equipment, and sites. Several Board of Education meetings throughout 2425 hosted financial, legal, and construction consultant presentations to review these lists of needs and to consider various methods to finance major updates to the district's facilities and equipment over the next several years. On May 6, 2025, the board directed administration, legal counsel, finance consultant, and our design and construction team to develop and submit a Michigan Department of Treasury prequalification application related to a potential bond issue for 2526 and beyond. In late May 2025, Lakeview's team met with Treasury officials to review the prequalification application to confirm the list of projects and proposed financing plan were acceptable. In mid-July 2025, legal counsel reviewed official notification from Treasury that our worklist, ballot language, and proposed bond financing proposal were acceptable to go before Lakeview voters. The process of calling for an election requires a vote of the local Board of Education. Legal counsel has prepared the attached resolution which identifies the November election, the bound on ballot language, the authorizes administration to work with the city to conduct the election, seeking approval from Lakeview voters to authorize the sale of bonds in the amount of $44,105,000 to improve Lakeview's building, sites, equipment, and infrastructure. The list of projects includes classroom and office heating and cooling, roofing, technology updates, security updates, parking lots, preschool classrooms, and multiple other minor projects. At this time, administration requests on the board approve the resolution approving the bond ballot language authorization of administration and call for an election on November 5, 2025, as provided by legal counsel from Miller, Canfield, Paddock, and Stone.
Mr. President, I would like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing administration to work with city officials to provide a bond ballot question and election on Tuesday, November 5, 2025.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Martin, support by Ms. Taylor, discussion on the motion.
I noticed on page three, there's a punctuation issue on the third bullet. I feel it should be a period and not a question mark.
That's a great comment. We had that question asked of legal counsel, because the whole thing is actually a question.
Huh, how about that?
So you're saying yes or no to the whole thing as a question.
Oh, got it, didn't make sense. Thank you for the.
We had that same conversation.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I know it's kind of interesting times right now, so we'll see what the voters have to say en masse.
I think it's a good thing that it's budget neutral, and we all need to support it moving forward.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, changes in personnel, revised action item at our places.
Tonight, administration is bringing forward the following changes in personnel since the last presentation to the Board of Education on July 8, 2025. New hires and reassignments. Dana Pets, Lakeview Public Schools Greenwood Principal, effective August 4, 2025. Heather Weaver, Lakeview Public Schools Early Child Care and Latchkey Coordinator, effective July 28, 2025. Valerie Sichetti, Lakeview Public Schools Executive Assistant Human Resources, effective August 11, 2025. Julie McDonald, Lakeview Public Schools Princeton Elementary Second Grade Teacher, effective August 15, 2025. And Robert LaRocco, Lakeview Public Schools Jefferson Middle School Art Teacher, effective August 15, 2025. Retirements. Kim Adder, Lakeview Public Schools GSRP Associate Teacher, effective July 31, 2025. Resignations. Deanna Ray, Lakeview Public Schools District Speech Pathologist, effective July 31, 2025. And Kristi Bobko, Lakeview Public Schools Jefferson Middle School Food Service, effective July 31, 2025. Scheduled B Returning Coach Sponsor for the 2425 school year. Connor Eaton, Lakeview High School JV Baseball Coach. And Scheduled B Returning Coach Sponsors for the 2526 year, school year as listed.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the changes in personnel as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Taylor, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Have we any new hires?
We do, we do.
I got it.
I was, I warned Laura, I said, I'll take those comments for the new hires because he's close to me in case he misses, and he didn't, good job. Dana Pets is out there, got her, was it two-year-old?
Yes.
And maybe your husband, huh?
Yes.
Dana's joining us from another school where she has been an administrator for a number of years. You know, she was a teacher-coach in that, in that building as well, and a regular elementary teacher for a number of years, so she comes well-versed in the elementary setting. She's a Ferris State grad in elementary ed and a Grand Valley grad for her master's in leadership, so welcome, Dana. She's already started, so.
Yeah.
Our next person on my list of those is Valerie Sichetti. I can see her in the second row there. She's got her husband with her, too, don't you? So she spent a number of years in retail management after graduating from Wayne State, and then jumped over into sort of the school environment the past eight years or so at a district non-to-be-named a few miles south of us, somewhere where we've taken a few people from the recent past as it goes. So she's joining us with experience in the HR office, and it's going to be beneficial for Tracy and her team and everybody around the district because she does have some experience knowing some of the systems that are in place with us, and that's very beneficial. So welcome, Valerie. And I see Rob LaRocco out there, too, and know Rob from many years ago when he was first a Lakeview teacher at the high school, right? And Rob's a Marine Corps veteran, and he went to, you know, CMU for his undergrad, several of us around the district can claim that, SVSU for his master's degree, and left to fool around in higher ed all over the country, right? And he finally realized, you know what, this is where it belongs, right? The passion is here. So he's found his way back. We happened to have a position open up recently, and you know, it's not a shock that then you're on his resume, you see some of our own people as his references, that's not a shock, right? And he's here with his partner in crime, and welcome back, Rob. Good to have you.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, well, welcome aboard to all the new hires, those here this evening and those not here this evening, so we look forward to long, many long years with you. Thank you. Moving on with item A under bond implementation, bid pack number 11, Lakeview High School Pool Sump Pumps Change Order. Oh, wait, got to go teach, oh, got to get to the important one here. I had already marked it off, sorry. Teacher contract tentative agreement. We're going in reverse here.
Hey, where were you earlier? Jeez. I think Stephanie was kind of concerned, and some of our people watching online were probably concerned, too.
Sorry.
This evening, administration is bringing forward a recommendation regarding the teacher's master agreement with the MEA/NEA Local One Lakeview. The negotiating teams have worked collaboratively utilizing the interest-based bargaining IBB structure for the first time in Lakeview. The team composed of members from both sides has been meeting since February 2025, and I am pleased to report that the Board of Education negotiating representatives and the association representatives have reached a tentative agreement. The agreement recognizes the district's need for fiscal stability while maintaining collective bargaining agreements that attract and retain quality staff. The tentative agreement includes the following highlights. Its duration is August 15, 2025 to August 14, 2028, so it's a three-year contract. Here are just some highlights for the financial side. 2526, all eligible bargaining members shall advance one step at the commencement of the 2526 school year. 4% on schedule for all bargaining members effective at the commencement of the 2526 school year, and the salary schedule addition revenue impact will be suspended for the 2526 school year. For 2627, all eligible bargaining members shall advance one step at the commencement of the 2627 year. 2% on schedule for all bargaining members effective at the commencement of the 2627 school year. If the student FTE multiplied by the statutory foundation allowance is determined by the December 2026 state aid status report is greater than any amount than the student FTE multiplied by the statutory foundation allowance is determined by the December 2025 state aid status report, then the salary schedule shall increase by an additional 1% retroactive to the commencement of the 2627 school year. The rest of the salary schedule addition revenue impact will be suspended for the 2627 school year. For 2728, all eligible bargaining members shall advance one step effective at the commencement of the 2728 school year. The salary schedule addition revenue impact will be in effect for the 2728 school year as it relates to changes to the wage grid, see below. Salary formula changes effective January 1, 2028. Removal of off-schedule furlough days on the formula, removal of lanes on schedule, and wage trigger amounts remain the same. Increases in longevity amounts, tuition reimbursement amount, liability insurance amount, leave-day payout amounts, and class-size overages amounts. Substantial new language on evaluation, assignments, vacancies, layoff, and recall. Substantial new language on evaluation, assignments, vacancies, layoffs, and recall. New language for secondary department heads. And clarification language in various articles in the contract, including staffing, assignment, evaluation, transfer, et cetera. Administration appreciates the professionalism displayed by all members of the IBV negotiating team and recommends approval of this contract with language and changes as presented.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the tentative agreement with the changes as listed for the Lakeview teachers represented by the MEA/NEA Local One Lakeview.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, any discussion on the motion? First off, I'd like to congratulate the administration and the teachers' union for job well done. It's probably one of the least contentious sessions or paths we've taken over the years. So it's greatly noticed and appreciated that we were able to come to consensus here so fast and without much fanfare. So again, thank you to both teams as well as all the support of the teachers in bringing this to the table this evening. So thank you. Any other comments?
It's great news that we have such a favorable tentative agreement and soon to be agreement in place so we can retain and recruit the very best teachers for our school district.
Any other comments?
I will, I will echo what you were saying there, Dan. And, you know, the, as, as people would exit each day, they were sort of exhausted because there was no breaks. And you spend a whole day really around this table. And both teams sitting, every other person as a part of the process. And as they exit at, you know, 3:30 or 4 o'clock and there's this, you know, chance to reflect for a few seconds. And they're just exhausted because it really, I mean, lunch was sort of a break, but it was together. You know, even that. So well-deserved are both, you know, it's really one team in many respects. 14 or 15 people and, you know, it's well-done and well-appreciated for sure for both sides.
And you had mentioned it was 11 full days of negotiation from February till now.
And there's very little doubt that because it was a new way to do it, that was slower at the start. I wouldn't imagine that if they did it all again, it would take 11 days. They'd probably be able to do it in seven or maybe, you know, something like that.
Good stuff. Glad, glad to see it worked out as well as it did. Greatly appreciated. And I'm sure the staff is, has a sigh of relief as well that there's no contention moving forward and we're able to come to terms. So good stuff. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now I get to move on to the next one that I was. Bid Pack Number 11, Lakeview High School Pool Sump Pumps Change Orders.
Tonight, administration is recommending a change order to Guy and Missler for replacement of pool sump pumps and installation of building management controls in the pool at Lakeview High School. These sump pumps are located in a stairwell that is an emergency accident and at some points, the sumps failed. Once this was discovered, administration directed Barton Mallow Builders and Partners in Architecture to develop a plan to replace these sump pumps in order to allow the pool to be drained safely to complete the work on pool filtration drains. Once the appropriate-sized pumps were recommended, Barton Mallow engaged Guy and Missler, the mechanical contractor on Bid Packs 11, to provide pricing for this project. Guy and Missler provided a quote for the work, which was reviewed by both PIA and Barton Mallow Builders. Team found the pricing to be appropriate for the scope of work. And administration directed Barton Mallow to continue with the work in order to keep the construction schedule moving forward. Therefore, is recommended that the board approve a change order and contract increase to Guy and Missler in the amount of $27,949. And Barton Mallow is here to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the change order and contract increase to Guy and Missler in the amount of $27,949.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Mr. Asia. So how is that whole project coming along right now with, with pool? What is your anticipation? I understand.
With everything that has been required, we're keeping pressure on everybody, even ourselves. So we're part of the pressure. Sump pumps are definitely needed to have service in the future if we have a drainage pool that's clean and power washes. And it just seemed like it was in this vault, this, you know, self-contained area. Every surprise, you know, would come across.
Touch a 70-year-old pool, this is what you get.
I do have one question regarding the outside in the back of the pool where the condenser is, I guess you would call it, the train car. Yes. It looks like there's some pole rods holding up that ductwork. Is there going to be something put in front of that? So no person driving a vehicle back there, leaving football games and things like that accidentally backs into it or, you know, like a big yellow pole there?
Two weeks ago about putting ballards in place similar to what you see at the elementary schools, there's the yellow ones with gas meters. So it'll be, something to prevent someone backing up or busting. We're going to get, and they have auto shop in the area. So put back fence, I think two will be needed, so defensive.
Maybe with the guardrail along between the two poles as well? So nothing gets in between there?
We'll keep in mind.
Okay, cool. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, seeing no more business before this board, I motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin to adjourn, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned at 8:11. Enjoy the rest of your summer. Now that bargaining is done, you can go out and enjoy what's left.
There's nothing.
Let's not get crazy, Dan. Let's not get crazy.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes, sir.
I'm surprised you asked about yellow poles. I thought.